Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, March 13th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and free of any injustice at all.
So, all members are present except Mayor Rayum, who is ill and excused, and Council Member Olson, who is out of town. And here's Council Member McAuliffe. So first order of business is the meeting agenda approval. Does anybody, I can't imagine we have changes, it's a study session. So shall we move on to visitor comments? Do we have any visitor comments? No? Great. With that, we can start the study session, AB 18044 Housing 101 and Housing Strategy Update. And here to begin is Dave Boyd.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm just going to give a brief intro. The main topic tonight is the Housing Strategy Update, but in order to provide some background and some context for that, we're going to start off with a Housing 101 presentation by Arthur Sullivan, who joins us here from Arch along with Mike Stanger. We've been working, well, just a little bit of background. The Housing Strategy grows out of the Comprehensive Plans Housing and Human Services element and provides, puts some meat on those, the goals, policies, and actions with more directive strategies for addressing housing, all sorts of housing issues. The Housing Strategy was last updated in 2011, so we're due and overdue, particularly in light of the challenges that we're facing as a region with explosive growth and the pressures that puts on housing. And I think we're all aware of the affordability issues around housing. So we are hoping that tonight is a chance to get some background information about housing issues and approaches that are being taken in the region, and then to delve into the Planning Commission's recommendations for the Housing Strategy Update. It's a process that's been over a year in the making. They held their first study session on the Housing Strategy Update in November of 2016, and then continued with a series of study sessions, public hearing, panel discussions, focus groups. Some of the folks that were involved in some of our focus groups are here tonight. So a lot of work, a lot of effort, and a lot of thought went into this strategy. So I hope that you'll receive it well, and I'm sure you'll have many questions, and that's the main thing. We want to get council questions, comments, before we then bring it back for adoption on May 1st. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arthur for Housing 101 presentation.
Thanks. So we're going to, purpose of this first part, as Dave said, is just to sort of give you some overview and background and context of different strategies cities use and sort of the different ways in which they do that. The first thing, you know, we are dealing, we are dealing with all housing issues, but when we often are working, or often cities are focusing on, quote, "affordable housing." And this chart here is just to give you a little bit of context. Under the countywide planning policies in King County, and similarly in Sohamish County, there are sort of three tiers of affordability that we're typically looking at in your policies address, and I just wanted to give them a little context before we jump in and start throwing terminology at you to understand that. So those three levels are 30% of median income are very low income, and that sounds like really low income, but it's still an income of $20,000 to about $30,000 a year for a single versus a family of four. And we've heard a big debate about 15-hour wage is sort of an increase for people. Well, that would translate to $30,000 a year. So even at the very low income level, it is still in the range of minimum wage-type salaries, and that's the kind of income people earn at the minimum wage level. And it turns into rents that people can afford around $500 to $750 a month. You can see a little bit down below on this chart that average rents in the city are $1,200 to $2,300 a month for studios through two-bedroom units, and that's in the Kenmore-Bothel area. Low income is another tier level, and that's over 50% of median, and that translates to just under $35,000 a year to just under $50,000 a year. So that translates $50,000 a year is about $25 an hour, if you look at it from an hourly salary point of view. And then moderate income is basically, or 80% of median, that ranges from low $50,000 for a single person up to around $75,000 for a family of four. So when we're talking affordability tiers, we are talking about people who are often employed in our communities and things along those, you know, a lot of local employees and things along those lines. In fact, I believe close to half the jobs in the city of Bothell earn under $50,000 a year, just to sort of translate these numbers and give you some context. And we're talking about housing affordability. We're often talking about our local workforce in a wide range of areas, from service workers, teachers, accountants, and our entry-level accountants, and bookkeepers, and a wide range of types of jobs. This slide here, the reason I put this up here, I often use this when I'm working, I use this with the Planning Commission, when we are talking about housing strategies with cities. And the reason I like to show this slide is to give a sense of the role of government. And often, when I'm talking with the public and stuff, they'll go, "Oh, public housing, that's not a good thing," you know, and they think of public housing, large developments, poor condition. Well, what we tried to show you here is that there's a lot of different kinds of housing, a lot of different ways to affect affordability, and the government role can really vary significantly. And government always has some level of role. In market rate housing, in that first column, they do have the role of the develop, you know, issuing permits on the land use regulations, and they're a regulator of housing. And then, under some of your incentive systems, I'm going to talk about in a minute, it's pretty much the same role. You're still working with the private system, and you're using the development permitting tools that you have in fact to create a wider diversity or some level of affordability. But there's a lot of other roles that create, or that affect creating housing, from being the developer role, the builder role, the design role, financing, landowner, property management, and neighbors, who often have a lot of say and impact on local land use. So what we have found is that when you look at public housing, and you see we shaded most of the boxes, the government plays most of those roles, okay? And that's when you think, they're the designer, they regulate what you can build, they regulate the design, they finance it, they have management rules that are owned by housing authorities. So it's a very strong public role. But there's stuff in between those two ends, and that's what we're sort of trying to show you in that third column, is that there's areas in which local government can pick and choose augmenting some of those other roles in order to supplement or to impact the kind of housing that's created. They might own land in order to make it available and make it, and target it for certain types of housing. They can provide direct assistance, and I'm going to be showing examples of all of those in, over the next few minutes. But I wanted to sort of give that context that cities and, at the, government at all levels, and at the city level, you don't, you know, it's not one or the other, you know, no role or regulator or, you're in full board. There's other kinds of tools that you can try to implement, and hopefully in the next 15 minutes or so, you're going to see examples of how checking off and getting involved with some of these other boxes can help create a wider diversity and affordability of housing in your community. Another way of sort of looking at this, as I explained in my first slide, those three kind of different tiers of affordability, and then there's market rate housing. And what we're basically going to show you is sort of looking at strategies that first, where government gets involved, where they can use their empowering tools in order to have the market try to be as responsive to the full range of needs in the community as possible. And that's mostly through types of housing you create and stuff. You're not affecting the direct economics, but you are affecting the range of housing that can be created in your community, and it can also be how easy or expedited you can make it for the market to respond to different market conditions. In an ideal scenario, you would just be using the market to meet all your housing needs. That would be the ideal scenario, that's how our country is set up for housing, is most of our housing is created through the private market. But then the second level, and this is more geared towards this 50% to 80% income range, different programs, different levels, you're still working with that private sector partner more often than not, but you are actually trying to empower them to create explicit types of housing that meet certain affordability needs in your community, and I'll show you examples. And then the third tier is where you get into more direct assistance, and those are generally geared towards the lower incomes. And so you have this range of strategies, and generally, the better you do in the first and the second, because we only have so much resources, then you can target your resources towards that greater need in the community. The less you do in the first two, the greater the need is, and you have more of a broken system. And you'll come back later and show you that, I think in the work that we've done with a lot of the cities on the east side, it's not about choosing one of these levels, it's about working in all of these levels to try to affect the overall supply of housing in your community. So in the first, I'm going to now go through each of those three areas and give you examples of some things that cities have done in order to increase, and generally, this is to increase the overall supply, to increase the diversity, and also to increase relative affordability. You're not meeting the explicit affordability, but through that diversity, you get a wider range of price points in your community. One example is allowing mixed-use housing, you know, in many cities, I've been doing this a long time on the east side. When I first started working on the cities, there was not one residential center, mixed-use residential center on the east side, even including Bellevue. Bellevue only had a few housing developments when I first started working. That's changed significantly. But what some cities have done, so almost every city has created centers that allow higher density and different forms of housing that are generally smaller than single-family and are therefore more affordable. Some cities have gone so far in their mixed-use zones to actually set the rules differently for residential use than they do for commercial use, so that they're giving, quote, "a leg up" on housing in those areas to make, because they didn't have housing in those areas, and they wanted to make sure that housing took off, and so they set special rules. They allowed higher heights, they allowed a higher floor area ratio for housing over commercial in order to sort of make sure that they were getting housing in those areas. And in a lot of our cities, yours included, a lot of your remaining housing land capacity is in mixed-use zones, and you're not alone there. A lot of cities are counting on growth in these centers as to where a high portion of your future growth will be. Within those, and then within those centers, what range of housing do you allow in those centers? And we have seen a couple cities on the east side have done things to encourage eco-units or micro-apartments, so very, very small apartments, under 300 square feet, and have helped in their land use and building codes in order to allow those to be built. So these are developments that are built by the private sector, mostly it's one developer who's been doing them on the east side. He's done three in Redmond and one in Kirkland now. And when his units, yes, they're very small, but they are affordable at that 50% of median to 60% of median level and maybe a little bit higher, but that's what they are affordable at. Very popular, he finishes one and he starts the next one because it is responding to a need in the market. One of the ways the cities have helped is sometimes reducing parking, and then sometimes they will have some common shared areas with kitchens as well, but most of the units do have small, you know, like microwaves or things like that, but they do have, all the units have bathrooms, small bathrooms, and they do have a small cooking area. So they're independent unit, but there's usually larger kitchens that can be shared. And if you have questions on any of these as I go along, please feel free to jump in and ask questions. This next example is one in which you do, and some, a couple of other cities have done the same, which is you set separate rules for senior housing, it's sort of an overlay. You did it in one particular area of the city, the city of Bellevue did it in any multifamily zone, where senior housing meets certain types of definitions, you will look at them differently than a market rate or a private family development in that community. In Bothell, you basically sort of let people build, you don't look at density, you rather look at height and bulk. In Bellevue, what they do is they allow, if the units are under a certain size, they allow a unit to be, count as a half a unit towards the, towards the density, and they do reduce parking. So the building that you see in this picture called Brandon Wood was on some city land, and it looks almost identical to the buildings next to its typical garden-style apartments, yet this building is up close to 50 units to the acre, whereas most garden-style apartments are in the low twenties. So that's an example, and then you have obviously your area over by the senior center where you've had quite a bit of senior housing built. So that's another example of where it's the market building it, but it's allowing more diversity. Another tool that some cities have used is in the area of, quote, cottage housing. And cottage housing is allowing smaller units to be built at higher densities in, in single-family neighborhoods. And so Kirkland allows, Kirkland and Redmond are two areas that allow this and have had units built. Sumamish also allows cottage housing, and actually in Kirkland, they have two different tiers. If it's under like 1,500 square feet, you get, you can get one and a half units. If it's under like 1,200 square feet, you can get two units versus what you would normally get. Kirkland encourages clustering, as you can see in this diagram here, but that's another example. Again, it's not explicitly affordable housing, but it is less expensive than new single-family homes, and you are also serving a smaller, a different kind of household typically. Another example that we've worked on a lot over the years is accessory dwelling units. These are small apartments within single-family homes, you allow this, as do many cities. Different cities have slightly different rules. Showing you just a couple different examples in these pictures, may be a daylight basement, as in the right-hand picture that you see there, might be above an existing garage, or it might be an addition, which is what the upper-left-hand picture is, an addition that was done, that added the garage, and then an ADU above that garage, but it's all a single structure. So different, a lot of different ways to do accessory dwelling units. And again, these aren't explicitly targeted to any income level, but we find from a lot of analysis, these units will typically be affordable at moderate incomes, and often will rent at a slightly lower rent level per square foot than what you would typically see in a regular rental home. So that's an area that a lot of cities have looked at and have expressed a lot of interest, and you'll see later tonight, we'll be talking more about that. So that's the first category. The second category is when cities are using explicit tools within their tool chest and explicitly require some type of public benefit in terms of affordability and exchange. In this case, the first example, and this is the most common that we're seeing being used over the last 15 years, is that when cities change the zoning capacity of property, there is some type of link to affordability as a portion of that increase. And that can be done a couple different ways. It can be done as a requirement that in that zone, a certain percent will be affordable, no matter if you use the full allocated increased height or not, which is the case in Redmond and a number of cities. Others, it will say will have a low, keep the existing lower density, or FAR, or whatever they're using, and say if you want to do affordability, if you, will let you build higher if a portion of that increase is affordable, so it's technically voluntary, and builders may or may not use it. And then, and those are the two primary different ways cities have done it. And then some cities have sort of a citywide voluntary system that applies in any zone, and it says you can get a 10% increase if a portion of them are affordable. Those are the three basic ways that we've seen cities use. Their land use provisions and density provisions to get affordability. The first two have gotten more results than the third. The third has only been a few developments that have used a pure, straight voluntary, available citywide. This is to show you an example of the range of housing that's been created through land use incentives. Two of these, these are actually, these three are all in Redmond, you can see, two of these are in downtown Redmond, one is a condominium that was built 15-plus years ago, one is rental housing. But you can also see that they've used this tool in some lower-density neighborhoods, as you can see in the lower right-hand example here. And then here are examples of other properties in which land use incentives have been used in different settings. The two on the left are both ownership projects, sort of townhouse, that are right on the edge of single-family neighborhoods where they allow the rezone in a transition area, and a portion of those units are targeted to moderate incomes. Another tool that some cities have used is reduced parking. So in the case here in Bellevue, Bellevue will allow reduced parking if a unit is a certain size and targeted to a certain income level. So they built that directly into their code. So those are examples. This is a chart showing you all the different cities who currently in East King County are using one form or another of the first two approaches, where they are linked to rezones in the city, and you can see that in the case of Kirkland and Redmond and Sumamish and Newcastle and Issaquah, they are mandatory. In the cases of Kenmore, Bellevue, and Mercer Island, they have created a base, and then to get to the full allotment of height and/or density, you provide affordability. And Sumamish has actually done a hybrid of the two, they, in their town center area. They have a mandatory portion, and then when they zone that whole, they create a town center area, they put a mess of units on the sidelines, and builders can buy those extra units and put them on their site if, what's the percentage? What percentage has to be affordable in Sumamish for the voluntary? A third or a quarter of the voluntary units in town center?
I don't remember.
Okay. Some, I think it's 25% of what you bring from the sideline and put on your site, and they have a certain number. It's not an unlimited amount, they have a certain amount that was based on the environmental review and what their traffic analysis said the center could hold. And the builders have been buying those. They've been doing the mandatory, and then a number of the builders have already bought that extra density that's been on the sideline, and they've very close to using up that capacity, as I understand, maybe they will use that up this year, and that's a relatively new plan. So you, and what you can see here, though, is that, two things in the other two columns. You can see that they're targeting different affordability levels. They're not always right at 80%, some are at 50, some are at 70, some are at 60. And where cities are getting there is two ways. One, they're looking at the needs in their community, and they're saying, "Well, we'd really like to get to this income level if we could. This looks like a kind of job profile that we really would like to have housing affordable to." And when they do that, they're often saying, "Boy, you know, if 50% of median is $50,000 a year for a family of four and 35 for, we want to create that if we can." So one way you do that is you give more bonus, you get a smaller percentage of units that are affordable, but you get them more affordable. So it's just a math thing. The other thing some cities have started to do is they're combining incentive systems together, and I'll come back to that in a second, because I first want to explain what that other incentive system is. And the other point I want to make related to that previous slide, too, is that many of these programs were written, well, let's see, Redmond goes back 25 years, or 20, almost 25 years. Some of them are only three or four years old, but all of them are three or four years old now. And what I, purpose of this slide is to show that it's not like we always see, have the experience, you adopt an ordinance, and all of a sudden, there's a flood of new affordable housing. It often takes a while sometimes for these sort of land use incentives to sort of kick in. We also had a recession, so there wasn't a lot of development. But what you do see in the last three years, what this chart's showing you is how many affordable units have been created annually through these local land use incentive programs. And in the early, in the 90s, in the early 2000s, we basically had Redmond and Bellevue had the voluntary program, and then all of a sudden, those other ones started getting added in the early 2000s and the mid 2000s, 2000s. And now with the recession over and those programs in place, we can see that while maybe some of those programs didn't see results immediately, we are now seeing that in all of those communities that we listed, builders are building and they are providing the affordability that are in those local programs, to the point where in the last year, and this slide looks a little outdated, because in 2017, we actually got to 250 units by the end of the year. And so that's a very significant increase that we're seeing through these types of programs. So they may not look like, when you look at individual ones, anyone generates, but when you start adding them together, it starts to really make a difference. The other is, is that these units will be the same type of housing as the market rate units. They're in court, they're 10%, anywhere from 5% to 15% typically of the total units. If the development is ownership housing, the affordable units will be ownership housing. If they're rental, they'll be rental. If there is a mixture of ones, twos, and three-bedroom units, the affordable, they might be a little bit smaller, but you will have a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units that are the affordable units. So what you're seeing is you get a broader mix of affordability and also a broader, you get both ownership and rental. So in this chart here, the blue ones are owner-occupied affordable units, and the red candy cane kind of colored ones, those are rental units. We're going to come back later in the evening and talk about why the blue bars are so short in the last few years, and that's something that was talked about in the local strategy. But I think the main illustration here is sometimes it takes a lot of programs and time and patience, but we're now starting to see the fruits of the efforts of councils in the last 15 years to set up programs along these lines. And then there's the multifamily tax exemption is another program that is of strong interest by a number of, cities are starting to use it. It's a relatively new tool. It was originally intended just for larger cities, and this is also an example of how the arch cities all got together about 10 years ago. And this tool, which is basically is a tool that's enabled under the RCWs, that allows a city to exempt for either eight or 12 years, the, all property taxes on the residential improvement value. So the property still continues to pay its taxes on the land value and on the commercial value if it's a mixed-use property, but the improvement values on the residential is exempted for eight or 12 years. To get the 12-year exemption, you must meet at least 20% of the units be affordable for eight years, the public benefit is as the council wishes to define that. It could be something else, it could be affordability at a different level, but there's always intended to be some public benefit. Cities designate what areas. So you can do it one site, you can do it one neighborhood, you can do it, Kirkland did all the neighborhoods that had both a combination of housing or mixed-use or the multifamily housing immediately adjacent to like their downtown. So they have it in a number of their areas. And then there's a lot of flexibility to add other bells and whistles if you want to a program like that. As you can see here, we've listed, there are five cities, sorry I missed my typo there on Issaquah, that have adopted. Issaquah was the most recent, and there's a site-specific, Kenmore's was also site-specific. The other three are multiple neighborhoods where they have the program. Redmond only adopted their program last summer, Bellevue only two years ago. So you can see, most of the cities, it's a relatively new tool. As I mentioned, 10-plus years ago, it was only available to cities over 100,000. Then it went down to like 75,000. And then the arch cities, because the arch membership includes cities from Woodinville, which has a center, but only has 10,000 people, to cities like Bellevue, the arch cities actually went to the legislation and said, "Hey, why, we're all trying to plan under the Growth Management Act, why wouldn't you allow more cities to use this tool?" And so by banding together and with some other people in the state, this tool is now available to any city that plans under GMA, regardless of their size, is a tool available to you. We don't see as much production yet from this tool because it's still relatively new, but it is another tool. What Kirkland did is they combined this tool with the land use tool, and they put them together, and that's how they were able to get down to 50% of median. They said, "Hey, if we add the value of both of these together, we can maybe get more from a private development for affordability." The third area is the area of direct assistance. This is, as I mentioned, is going to typically target lower income, and there's basically three main tools that cities have been using, there's some others. One is funding assistance, another is fee waivers of either permit or impact fees, and the third is surplus land or underutilized land. So the main way that cities have been working and doing this, again, the arch cities created this unique situation of combining their application, setting aside funds and then using an application process. I was just here a few weeks ago, so I'm not going to go in a lot of detail on the trust fund, and you just made your first award from general fund dollars, but you have been participating in the program through CDBG funds in the past, which is a federal fund source. The main thing I would point out about the trust fund, one, its goal is to serve a wide range of housing needs, families, seniors, homeless persons with special needs. We also have used a combination of local resources, general fund dollars, which you added to this year, federal CDBG funds, but also some cities have done land donations and fee waivers, which I'll come back to in a minute. It's been about 15% or less of the total cost, so that money is leveraging another 400 million of private and other public funds from the state, the county, the federal level, and not being done by Archer. We're just And not being done by arch or we're just an extension of your cities. It's being done by nonprofit groups and certain developers who put these complicated deals together, which I'll show you in a couple of minutes just how complicated they get. One of the unique things we've been able to do is we've managed in this region, in the, we got into a period in this country where the federal government, instead of building public housing, they subsidized private builders and they provided what are called section eight or voucher assistance to private owners and have very, very affordable housing and the government would subsidize them. But they were 20-year contracts and those 20-year contracts started expiring in the early 1990s. When that happened, in most places in this country, many of those owners converted those to market rate housing. We had 660 of those units in East King County. 30 have been converted, 600 have been preserved through the Arch Trust Fund and working with local partners. So that those private units will stay under the federal program so long as that federal program is available. And if not, they won't go to market, they'll go to some other form of affordability. That has been one of the top priorities and that's an example of how we learned about that issue from one city. We looked at the whole sphere and it became one of our top priorities. So that's one of the ways we use the trust fund is to target local priorities and interests in order to get the kind of housing you want done. And, oh, I didn't know this was going to do this to you, sorry. But this is kind of like what it's like if you're dash housing and you get one funding source and you get that secured and then you go to another funding source. And by the time you're done collecting your 10 million, you've gone to six or seven different funding sources, public and private, and also developer fees, et cetera, in order to make deals work. This is a typical cross section of funding that it takes for those players who are out there trying to pull these deals together. So it's a complicated financing world they're working in, but it does often start at that local level. And one of the reasons we formed the trust fund is historically, a lot of that public money was landing in lower cost areas. We are not a lower cost area. By having created the Arch Trust Fund, we have encouraged you solve 33, we brought people to look on the east side because there was resources here to help get the ball rolling. And it also showed to those people who were doing affordable housing, they were welcome to come here. Okay? And I think that is as much as anything important. They realized these cities were putting up funds, they wanted to see proposals for doing affordable housing. Another area is permit and impact fee waivers. The city of Redmond kind of went way out on a limb on this one and they waived $2.5 million of impact fees and permit fees on this development to south. It's at the Village at Overlake, which is above a parking ride. So they took a parking ride, did not take it away. There's still a parking ride on the ground level and then they built the housing on top of it. Another example is the value of surplus land or underutilized land is increasingly, it is harder and harder for nonprofits or people building affordable housing to get site control. Okay? I've been in this field a long time. I used to be in the Bay Area. That was the hardest thing for us to always do is get control of land that we could then work with, even if you had to pay for it. Just getting site control is incredibly challenging because that funding strategy I just showed you takes two or three years to put together. What landowner is going to let you sit on a piece of land before you take it down when you takes that long to fund? So one of the values of utilizing public land is it helps to create opportunities for doing affordability, but it also creates an opportunity for the community to put their finger thumbprints on what they want to see created. These are two properties that were in Redmond. One is immediately adjacent to the Redmond Senior Center, just sort of like what you did with Riverside Landing. And they say, we want senior housing. It's the perfect location. And they had a small piece of land that they donated to make that happen. But they also gave the, the successful respondent, which is Providence, Providence Housing, which is an all shoot of Providence Health, they gave them the two years it took to put the financing together. The other one is a former federal surplus property in Redmond that has on the left, market rate townhomes, in the middle, homeless housing, 70 units, and on the right-hand side, 24 units of ownership housing by Habitat for Humanity. And the city came up with that game plan. They had a site and they said they wanted different types of affordability and different needs. And the condos, when they came on the market, were the most affordable condos on the market at that time. The cities went to a builder and said, I don't want you to maximize your price. We want to work with you to have a reasonable entry level price. So when you look at that type of opportunity, I'm showing you three different sites that have been used for transit that were underutilized, are still continued to be used for transit, but very different approaches to affordability on each one of them. The first one on the left in downtown Redmond, kind of just went with the land use incentive. There was no subsidies provided, but the city normally requires 10% at 80. They worked with Metro and they required 20% at 80% of median. So that was one example. So they pretty much just used the local land use tools. The middle one, the entire development, all 300 units are affordable and they're all at 60% of median income. So that was one in which they want, didn't go really far down the subsidy chain, but they did all of the units at a certain affordability level. And then the third one is the South Kirkland Park and Ride, which has about 240 units. Most of them are market rate, but then 58 of them are very affordable, homeless up to 50% of median income. So those are very different approaches cities have taken when they've had their land and they're basically structured around different financing approaches. Another opportunity that we're starting to see more of is faith properties. We have done probably about, supported about five different projects that have been built, maybe it's six now, that have been built on faith communities. And again, the faith use is still occurring on that property. They're just often bought a long time ago and they've got six or seven acres or buildings are on half of that land and they make a portion of that land available. It's not always donated. It's usually paid for. It might be a good deal, but it's often, they will give them good terms. They will give them the two or three years in order to buy that housing or to get the financing put together. And you can see this, everything, Cambridge Court is a small project buried in a single family neighborhood. These are all triplexes that are for seniors. And it was built by that church because they're in Lake Hills area of Bellevue and they saw their congregation aging and they had no options on places to stay in that neighborhood and afford it. And so they built 24 units on land that is in the back of the church and the units are designed to mimic the single family homes surrounding them. We have a habitat project and then more recently, we've been seeing more ambitious projects. You can see here, a four-story building on the backside of a church that's right on a major arterial in Bellevue. And that will have, half of the units will be for homeless and half will be other affordability at 30 and 50% of median income. So these are examples that we are increasingly seeing interest from the faith community to work in partnership. It's consistent mission with them and we can sometimes help them. They often will use those proceeds to fix their buildings up or they have some other need along those lines. But that is an area that more cities are, we're seeing that kind of conversation occur more. And then finally, just a few examples, starting with Riverside Landing in Bothell, of where cities kind of took a mixture of all the things I just described to you and packaged them together to help create affordability. In the case of Riverside Landing, you didn't, you couldn't donate the land. It was former transportation land that you weren't going to use for that purpose. The county owned a small piece, you put them together, had a big enough piece to be senior is right catty corner from the senior center. And then you did, we used the zoning that was allowed by your overlay zoning. And then there was funding from three cities from arch that helped with the public assistance at the local level. That was sort of our first foray into that kind of creativity. Next example is the city of Woodinville, much more ambitious. This was county land, again, was not donated because it was solid wasteland, but we were able to incorporate into a single development. We use a private, they're a private developer and two, two private developers and a nonprofit developer partnered together. And you have a combination of senior housing on the upper left-hand corner. You have ownership housing, including both cottages and single family detached homes with 20 of those homes targeted at 80% of median income and a cap on the market rate units. The builder agreed to cap the price, you know, not to go for the top end of the Woodinville market, but instead to do more mid-level. And then you have family rental at 30 and 50% of median income. And those uses are all physically integrated together within the development. And then there's preserved wetlands, a neighborhood park that was built right in the middle where that middle picture is from. And so there's an example that you had land that was controlled. The city allowed narrower roads, the city allowed cottages. And believe it or not, this property is on single family zone land and it needed, and because the city had policies that said, you preserve half the site in wetland and steep slope and woods, we will let you transfer that density. There was a density bonus for affordability used. There were city fee waivers and then there was funding from three cities and the county. So you can see that there was quite a variety of tools used to create this development that now meets a wide range of needs in the community. If you ever want to drive, when you go to the north end of town and you go up to Duval Road and there's a light where you turn to go to all the wineries, you'll see the backside of the, of the senior building. And if you turn right at that light, you can drive through this development if you're curious. Another final is the Village at Overlake. And this is one, again, a parking ride lot. And the builder had to pay to replace the parking for the parking ride, but they, they weren't charged any for the thing for the land in exchange for that. So that's sort of how they covered the land cost. The city waived fees, there was funding from multiple cities and all of these have also the funding from the county and the state. And this is in an area where the city has a housing emphasis area where they got to have higher density because it was residential versus if it had been a commercial only development. So those are all just different examples. I just have two last slides here. This is just a slide that sort of lists a lot of those strategies that I've just shown you, illustrated for you. And then for different cities in East King County, who have utilized those various programs in different degrees. So you can see here, there's a lot of filled in dots here. There's more to fill in, but there's a lot that had been filled in. So I think what this illustrates is that collectively, the cities have used a wide range of tools on the east side. And finally here, this sort of gives you a sense of the magnitude of scale that we're starting to see as a result of these different tools. What I will caution you on is that often tools are used, more than one tool is used in the same case. So it's not a matter of saying, add up the bottom columns and that's how many affordable units. Because all the ones with MFTE, they're probably also doing a land use incentive, but that also allowed us to get those units down to a lower affordability level. But you can see now, we have almost 1,500 units created through land use incentives on the east side. We've got the 3,300 plus from the funding. And then you can see the fee waivers, which often are complementing and makes it with the fee waivers, they don't ask for as much cash from the trust fund because they get the fee waivers. And then accessory dwelling units were at over 650 units on the east side of accessory dwelling units. So that is an overall overview. And then my last point that I would make here, and it's sort of, wraps up from where I started, is these different colors represent those three basic types of strategies. The purple is the market, you know, diversity through the market. The second is using your land use incentives and the third is direct assistance. And the point that I like to try to make in this slide, there's two of them. The first is that if you're saying, why, you know, all of these strategies have a place, that they can help. Now maybe you're not getting to low income with the market or through the land use incentives, but they are helping to increase diversity and relative affordability. And in many cases, they are getting down to the moderate income level. And that all of those strategies have been used by cities to get, to start to address that need that the market just purely on its own is rarely achieving. But to get to low income, we almost always have been needing direct assistance. We might use some of those other tools, but that doesn't quite get you down to that really low income level. And as you can see though, the value that we see in cities looking at all of these strategies is by doing all, you get a lot more accomplishment, a lot more diversity and affordability in your communities. So that's the 101. Any questions on that?
Just a quick question. Could you, you said you were going to come back and talk about why we're seeing fewer and fewer homeownership happening over time?
That comes with the 101 strategy. We have a slide for that.
That's coming up.
Yes. That's for the second, the meaty part of your conversation. When you guys are asking all your questions. So this was just hopefully to give you some context to set up the next part. Other questions?
Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, did you actually say that 50% of Bothell earns less than $50,000 a year?
50% of the workforce. Did I get my percentage right? Yeah, that's the workforce. That's people, jobs within Bothell, half of them pay under $50,000 a year.
Half the jobs within Bothell pay under $50,000.
And that's not unique to you. That would be true in almost every city on the east side.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. We just need to change our PowerPoint here. That would have been easier to go up to the beginning. Excuse me, want to get a little water break? Okay. So we're going to have a little more sort of background and then our goal is for you to get a chance to have more thorough discussion, leave a good chunk of this time for you to start understanding some of the priorities that the planning commission is recommending. Councilmember Zorn was part of that process, so I'm sure she can weigh in a lot on that. But first, we wanted to give you now a little bit, I sort of gave you an idea of strategies cities are using. I want to now give a context of the housing strategy. You've used it in the past, where it fits into the overall scheme of you as a city and why you would look into doing a product like this and what its purpose has been used for in the past and stuff. So the first is, we have a Growth Management Act. And the Growth Management Act has provisions related to housing and housing affordability. There's not a lot, only a few paragraphs, but it basically does a couple of things. It says, one, you will do a needs assessment. And I believe that was some, part of the materials that you see here is a subset of that needs analysis. And then the second is, based on that needs analysis, you will develop within your comprehensive plan, a housing element that has policies that help address the variety of needs that you have identified through that analysis. It also talks about having also enough land capacity to meet growth targets in general. So those are the basic, the very straightforward, basic provisions in GMA that set up a lot of other work that happens. Now, in addition to that, every county creates a countywide planning policies that are meant to sort of be the next step, guidance to cities and working on their comprehensive plans. And there is countywide planning policies. Often that's where, when you look at housing, affordable housing goals and targets are often expressed through the countywide planning policies. Now that process of developing those, it's not a King County or a Snohomish County process. It is all the jurisdictions within that county getting together and working together to develop a range of policies that then they all use to guide individual city efforts. This was last updated about five years ago, six years ago, just before the last update to the count, to the housing element at the local level. And in the affordable housing area or in the housing arena, something was added that was different than was in the previous countywide planning policies. There's still a lot of language about addressing affordability needs, but what was really acknowledged this go-round is cities are different. Different cities are facing different circumstances and therefore we should be more cognizant and recognize that one size does not fit all cities for approaching, dealing with housing needs. The result of that was, since you couldn't give clear guidance to say, you do X, Y and Z, or look at X, Y and Z, is they then added some language about a process, a planning process for cities to use. And that is first do that needs assessment, then implement policies and strategies to address unmet needs, then monitor what you accomplish as you implement those, and then go back again and reassess and adjust. And it's meant to sort of be a cycle. Okay? And that was something that was added to the King County countywide policies in this last go-round. And with complimentary language saying, and every city, we get it, we're not holding you the same kind of standards as before, but you do have needs, every city does have needs and use this process to help shape what you do. So this is sort of a box diagram of that cycle or where cities get involved and where they do things. So it starts with the Growth Management Act and the county that I just mentioned. You then write a comprehensive plan. You sometimes also have sub-area plans, which are a subset of your comprehensive plan. This is now where the housing strategy fits in. It's a tool that's been used by you and other cities in the past. It's a tool that's been used by you and other cities in the past to look at those policies and then look at a wide range of ideas, strategies, and figure out which ones are most applicable and most timely for you to work on. And what influences that is the information you collect from a variety of sources. And it's really kind of a work program. It says, these are the things that are mostly, we think are most promising, so we're going to work on them. We're not necessarily saying today, we're going to do this strategy and this is exactly how we're going to do it. We say, we think it has, these are the five that have the most promise, and over the next three years, these are the ones we're really going to buckle down on, look at really hard, and try to implement them, and see how effective they are, okay? And then you go back and see how well they worked. And that's where that cycle is, I told you. So the exercise that your commission has been going through is trying to, at this point, elevate from a big, huge, long list, which I'll go over in a few minutes, and come back to you and say, these are what we think are most effective for us to work hard at. And it's not just about affordable housing, it's about the whole range of housing needs. That will then guide work for the next few years on very specific local, adopting local programs. And then, one of the things you have to do when you create local programs, you have to administer those programs, and that's where Arch comes in, helps you a lot. We helped those, all those units you saw created through the fee waivers and that. This guy over here, more than anybody, works with those builders and other people in our office watch those buildings to make sure they're affordable. So those are all the steps of how government gets involved and how this housing strategy is a stepping stone to the really significant detailed actions. Without dictating, you don't necessarily know where you're laying. You might pick something, study it harder, and go, darn it, we thought it would be a good fit for our town, but it's not, okay? We tried to pick ones we think, you know, the commission tried to pick the ones they think will work, but you're not always guaranteed of that. So, and I think I've hit most of these. Something to keep in mind, it is like what you would be focusing on in the next three years, probably to implement, and five years for effects, and then the ideas, you go back and you update it, just like you had one before this one that was done. You also have to keep in mind, when you're doing this work, you're not starting at square one. So it's, it can be a matter of new ideas, or go back and revisit existing ideas, because maybe you didn't see the results you wanted. So you go back and maybe make adjustments to those. So it can be a combination of new and/or existing. And as I said, we think, you know, it then gets into the ones you pick need more work to actually get to the final thing. So here is a little flow chart of what's been going on for the last year. Is, the commission has been evaluating the housing element and all your policies. They've been looking at those existing efforts. They've been looking at the needs analysis, and they've been looking to community input. And that has been helping impact what they're presenting to you tonight. Well, I got one slide on each of these, and I'm pointing out, what's important here is the document you received, there is one appendix for each one of those boxes. So the first one is just a listing of all your housing goals that are in the comprehensive plan. And they range from vitality and character of neighborhoods, to attractive living accommodations, to affordability, to fair housing, to people with special needs. So there's a wide range of policies you have. And I'm not going to go in any more detail than that, but they're in your, the complete list of all your policies, and your goals and your policies are included in Appendix A. The second is, we built up, what kind of efforts has the city undertaken over the last 20 years? So we're generally, the work is organized into the general sections of your housing element, which is neighborhood vitality, housing choice and supply, housing affordability, and housing for special needs and seniors. And what we have listed up here, and again, if you look at Appendix B, it has these and some more detail, it's a couple pages, and it lists some of the things you've done over the last 20 years. From your downtown revitalization plan, you have a landmark preservation board, historic preservation code, you have a safe streets and sidewalks levy, those are all things that contributed to neighborhood vitality. For housing choice, you did some zoning to allow smaller lots, single-family homes. You have growth monitoring for residential, you have PUD provisions, so that people can be more creative in developing sites in order to do sustainable building and protect wetlands and things like that. You have master planning that you've done, you've got the Cascadian campus, UW campus. And so you have those types of things which have increased choices for people. In the area of affordability, you have accessory dwelling units, you have your mobile home park overlay, where you basically have a specialized zoning for those areas where you have some of your, many of your mobile home parks. And you've been a participant in Arch. So you've been funding, previous to this year, through CDBG to some degree, you made that piece of land available, so you've done some things there. And then in terms of special needs housing, you've had this specialized senior housing overlay zone in the city. One of the few cities to have an area that significant specifically for senior housing, and you've seen a lot of that response to that. So those are examples of things that were considered and that part of that process. The third is, community input. There was online survey, and again, Appendix D has a little bit longer list of all of these ranges of input. There were focus groups with senior, local employers, I believe, this, I think we had the business community, and I'm trying to get different cities mixed up who all we've talked with. We had the faith community we talked with. So we had about five or six different focus groups that we did, I think they're summarized there. And then we had a meeting where the commission invited a panel of private and nonprofit housing developers to come talk to them for a whole session about different strategies. And they all had that same big matrix in the back and talked through that and gave suggestions. So those are examples of the range. We heard things like, we need more modest forms of housing, we need smaller forms of housing, we need things to help seniors stay in the community, we want to preserve that manufactured housing, recognizing it's a unique type. The housing developer said, TUD-type housing, we need some more, you know, fine tuning to some of that work. They made the comment that public input's great in the planning level, but get that, do a great job at public input at the planning level. And then when a project comes along, hopefully if we're tailoring to what the plan says, we can go forward quickly. So they talked about multifamily tax exemption, looking at other things, you know, incentives that would work for affordability. And then you see here, the support ownership options for ownership housing condo liability. And I believe this is where, I'm not quite there yet. So those are examples of input there. And then the last is, both in the text of the document, as well as in Appendix C, we looked at the data and pointed out some of the information from the data that sort of stood out. One is, you have a lot of small households. 60% of your households are one and two persons. And if you look at your housing supply, you have less small units and more big units. Again, you're not alone there. Many of the things we see in Bothell are common in other cities throughout the area. You have about 20, 30% of your households are married with children, with 8% or almost a quarter of them being single-parent households. You have increasing diversity in your community. 25% minority compared to 15%, that's in 2010, it's probably even higher now, versus 15% in 2000, almost 14% foreign-born. You have, your low and very low-income renters are typically severely cost burdened. That means they're paying more than 50% of their income to live in their housing. The standard is, you should not pay more than 30. That's being cost burdened. This figure is for severely cost burdened. We have, in your documents, you can see more detailed data, I'm just sort of giving you the overview. If you have any questions about this, we'd be happy to refer to the information in your packet. Senior renters have a tendency to be more severely cost burdened than other renters. But you still also, we are seeing an increased number of moderate and lower-income homeowners who are severely cost burdened. So we're seeing that impact as well. Here's the stat, about half of the jobs pay less than $50,000. 85% of the people who work in Bothell commute from elsewhere. And related to that, the amount of demand for housing from your workforce, just from a pure count point of view, is greater than the amount of housing you have available. You're not way over, you're about 1.1. But when you look at the east side as a whole, and other cities on the east side, which are part of a market area, we are at a point where we have a demand for housing 50%, almost 50% greater from our workforce and housing supply available, because of the size of our workforce on the east side. Homelessness, it's not, it's a regional issue that has local roots everywhere. You have 200, over 200 kids in the North Shore School District who are homeless. You have 120 people who entered the homeless system last year whose last address was Bothell. And a third of those were families. So the homeless issue touches us all and throughout the county. So those are the ranges of input that the commission looked at. And then what they did is they did this thing, if you look on page six of the document, they called housing gaps. And that is, where do we see the biggest gaps? And that helped them start sorting through ideas for priorities. And they mentioned ADUs and other small forms of housing. So in this chart here, the ones that are solid are the ones that you kind of have, and that are more present. The ones that are in the dash lines are the ones that you have less of. But even in this chart, like the manufactured housing, it's something that's of concern that, can it be preserved? But affordable homeownership was identified, homelessness, and the opportunity to create housing near transit, and, you know, that opportunity to have walkable and neighborhoods and things along those lines. Those are the areas that, from looking at the data, we're seeing as the biggest gap areas. Now, in terms of, I just have two pieces of data, this is the only sort of data slide I'm going to show you. I just wanted to show you how unique your situation is with manufactured housing. This shows you in East King County, how many manufactured housing units there are today, and how many of them are in Bothell compared to other cities. And as you can see, you're at about 2/3 of all the manufactured housing that remains in East King County is in your community. And they're split, and they're both in both the King County and the Snohomish County side. So you have, and you have a wide variety of types of manufactured housing throughout your community. So very unique there. Here is the data on the condo legislation. One of the things we've been pointing out for the last 20 years is that, a couple points about condominiums. One, the graph on the left is showing you that condo prices are a lot less, that's the blue line, on average than single-family homes. That's the red line. And then what you're seeing in the green line is what's affordable at median income. And so condominiums have become essentially the entry-level market. In fact, if you look at it from a square footage point of view, I bet you the size of the average condominium built today is bigger than the average single-family house that was built in the 1950s and the early 1960s. Homes used to be under 1,000 square feet on average. So condominiums in our communities on the east side have become an integral element of the chain of housing, especially in the ownership world. And what we were seeing until about the recession, is that we were seeing that while you were increasing the percentage of your new permits that were multifamily, you were not seeing a decrease in ownership because the condominium market was occurring and was happening. But since the recession, you can see on the left, this shows you that the tenure of the new multifamily housing annual, and you can see, it goes from 50 and 60% in the mid-90s, and up and down between 20% and that 60% level, to now being pretty consistently under 10% in the last seven or eight years. And that's again, that's all of East King County. So this is a phenomenon that has been hitting the market, and as a result, is, we're not seeing as much balance in our centers between ownership and rental housing than we were seeing when those centers were first starting to grow. So now we're ready to talk about strategies. So hopefully, do you have any questions about the process and stuff? Because now it's your turn, we're going to explain, and hopefully, Councilmember Zorn will jump in with some of this. We want to talk about what filtered to the top. Any questions though, before we get to, before you start that?
Councilmember Goff.
Thank you. I find it quite amazing to me that 85% of the people who work in Bothell commute from elsewhere. Do you know where they commute from?
We could find that out. I don't know it off the top of my head, but maybe Mike or Dave know off the top of their head.
I know for Canyon Park, for the visioning study, we did some analysis of that, and the majority were coming from north of Bothell. So, but they're, if you look at the full diagram, they're really coming from all over, all over the region, from Seattle, from down south, but the biggest concentration was to the north. And what we've heard from the employers there is that their entry-level staff, the millennials, they don't want to live in suburbia, they want to live in an urban center. So a lot of them are actually commuting from Seattle neighborhoods, whereas more of the mid-level folks are looking for affordable housing and searching more to the north into Snohomish County.
That's really interesting, that depending upon whether they want to live in suburbia or in a larger city with more activity.
Right. And what we're starting to hear is, that's becoming less so increasingly in places like downtown Bellevue, downtown Redmond, downtown Kirkland, where they are seen as places to live. They're not necessarily all there now, but we are definitely, that was very true in all the centers, I'd say, up to 10 years ago. But we are now starting to hear, in fact, the person who built the S, who builds the little tiny units, was, I met with him about a month ago, and he's saying his Kirkland project is incredibly popular because people want to be in downtown Kirkland now. I mean, people who don't work in Kirkland want to still live there.
Well, just as an aside, yesterday I went to the Lincoln Center kind of restaurant area. It looked like New York City. I mean, I was like, couldn't believe it. It was like, where am I? Am I in New York? So yes, some people really want to live in those areas.
And in fact, Bellevue has been very consciously trying to do things to be attractive to, what's it called? There's a term, that they have studied, how to be attractive to the millennials and that generation kind of thing. And I'm not sure they've, you know, done everything they want to yet, but they are very conscious of that. Any other questions before we? Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, the strategies are grouped into these five basic areas, which are also consistent with the basic areas of the comprehensive plan. Now, Appendix G is the big document, it's probably seven or eight pages, and this is where the commission started in their prioritization process. And what you're seeing here is a description of strategies. And then what happened is, as they talked about, and from the input, from those various other boxes that I described to you, they started describing in a little more detail on that next column under examples, what would be potential ways that you would address that particular strategy? So the examples are meant to sort of say, those are some of the, what might be the things we look at if you prioritize, like here, manufactured housing communities. You can see, there's like four different thoughts that were developed during the process to help inform moving forward on those, and that were used by them. And thinking about and defining a little bit better what that strategy might mean for this community, or things to explore in greater detail. Then as you go across the page, you will see that we filled in information like, what kind of households might that strategy address? What income levels would it serve? And some other criteria, it's like, is it timely? Timely might mean, if we don't do it now, an opportunity could go away, and if it goes away, it will never come back. Impact, is it something we think has relatively insignificant impact? And then the next to last column is where they said, is this something that builds upon something we've done in the past? You know, is it a building upon strategy, or is it a new strategy? And then the final exercise was, for each of those group areas, those five group areas, they started rating them as a one, a two, or a three. And the ones are the ones that are saying, we think these are the most promising, and nothing went off the list. This is meant to be a winnowing process, not an elimination process. And so you can look, if you go through there, and part of your homework is to go look at that full list and see if you concur with what the commission's work was. You know, it's like, why didn't they, why is that one a tier two instead of a tier one? Because ultimately, this becomes your work program that's going to guide you and staff on work, and the community on work over the next few years. This is the commission's perspective and opinion, based on all that input we showed you, on what they think are tier one, and tier two, and then tier three were, you know, the ones that they thought were less, most likely to be least relevant. Now, and some of them too, they might be things they thought were important, but they think they're underway, and so they might have turned them into a monitoring. So they might not have become prioritized, but that this is important, but we've done something, so what becomes important is monitoring that one to make sure it's really working. So that gives you an idea of what Appendix G is about. And so now, I want to run through each of those five areas. And so now I want to run through each of those five areas and tell you what are, and these are all listed on pages six through eight of the report, the top tier. And all they are, and so when you look at that, you don't see a lot of detail. But if you're curious about A1, go back to the appendix and read all the examples. If there are examples in that one or a little bit more text under each of those, if you want to understand them a little bit better. But again, remember, this is the area of neighborhood vitality. And the ones that they picked were community design standards, housing repair and preservation, infrastructure maintenance, and sub-area planning. The comments I would make on those are related to, there was a lot of conversation about your existing housing and it being maintained, but it's also, it's part of your community character. It's part of a relatively affordable stock. And it also, you know, it serves a couple of different purposes to the vitality of the community. And so there, they were recommending that those be looked at and had a couple of different ideas for, and some of the housing repair programs are explicitly for affordability older who are lower income. Use housing repair so they can keep their house up and be able to stay in their home. So these were the four that they focused on under neighborhood vitality. And this is the point where I want to quickly go through these and then just open it up to your questions and/or thoughts, looking at the full one. Under housing choice and supply, things that they called out is regulatory flexibility, accessory dwelling units, transit-oriented development and condominium development. And there the focus was, what everyone's been hearing is, is there something with the state law under liability that is skewing the market being able to respond? And so there, the question is, it may not be a local action, but it might be cities working with state legislators together and consumers to see if there's any fixes to the state legislation that oversees liability provisions and other provisions like that. So it's, and that's been something that a number of cities have expressed interest in, preservation of manufactured housing communities and sub-area plans. Now with sub-area plans, you know, the second city this has come up is, that's a place where you have, you're focusing on one part of the neighborhood. And I think the reason these were called out is several of the tools that, and examples we gave you, like rezones or things like that, that might come out of the sub-area plan conversation. But some of these things, especially on the first page, the great setting for addressing some of those will be in your sub-area plan. So try to be very conscious in your sub-area planning process to utilize that process to address some of these priorities that have been identified through this process. So character, and it might be different in different subareas. But it's a, it's a place where they see a lot of opportunities. So whenever you start a sub-area plan, look at the scoping for that and see where some of the priority strategies might fit in to scoping for that particular area. Housing affordability, preservation got a lot of interest. Multifamily tax exemption was something expressed. Affordable housing with capacity increases, that's something the commission has already, you've had some conversations on that front. Some work has already begun on that. And then the idea of having family housing that's affordable, that is something that was again, expressed by a lot of the focus groups, is that the new housing's fitting people who might not be part of the old part of the community, that, who are working locally or things like that. And it seems to be targeted for people and the character of some of the communities being lost because of the nature of some of the new housing that's being built. And then finally, opportunities, I know I was asked a question, come prepared, is, well, how do we get opportunities with the housing trust fund? You know, how do we get, how do we get the linkage locally? How many examples did I show you where a city found some land that was underutilized or a faith property? Once that ball gets rolling through site identification, that's the best way of any that I can think of to start aligning. Because when a city is willing or a faith community is willing to make some land available, everybody starts getting interested. Other funders like it, they get excited. And it also, it gives you a chance, as I said earlier, to sort of put a, you know, put your stamp on looking at that needs and saying, we want this housing to be for this need, like you did with Riverside Landing 20 years ago. So that can be, not only is that a tool that can help, it can also be a tool to help you access other resources because you have a tendency, when you have a site identified, a lot of energy goes around making something happen there. And you can help identify that. Under special needs housing, they talked about senior housing capacity. And that's sort of, you have a lot more senior housing than almost any other community. And that may be falling more in looking, do you still need more? Because a lot of that area's been developed? Or is it, is that more monitoring? Aging in place though, is something we're hearing more and more about. Is seniors being able to stay in your, either their home or their neighborhood or their community, having those types of choices? We heard that a lot of, some of the senior housing is not necessarily, it's serving the children who live here, not the seniors who live here. In other words, it's the parents of people who have moved here as much as it is people who have lived in the community. And then looking at what types of service provisions would be most helpful for lower-income populations. And then in the area of homelessness, there's a lot of regional conversation. You have participated, you've helped fund the shelter that's going to be in Kirkland. But participating in that regional conversation so that you supplement that regional effort and plug into that rather than sort of, kind of figuring out your own sort of course because everyone's trying to have a coordinated regional system for homelessness. And then another thing that was brought up here in other communities, how do we raise community awareness about the needs and stuff? So there's maybe more broader community acceptance of some of these tools. So those are the main priority strategies that are listed on pages six and eight. But there was still one more step. And that is, the group did, the commission did one last thing. The first is, they specifically called out areas where maybe they didn't get prioritized, but they should be items where there is monitoring to make sure it's working. And one is just general monitoring to see how overall market's working. The other is monitoring previous efforts. So you have senior housing, you just adopted new procedures and regulations, make sure that those are working well. That's something you spend a lot of time on. Accessory dwelling units, you just updated your ordinance a couple of years ago or about a year ago. So maybe not charge into that, but watch how it's working. So there's several along those lines. Parking is another area. And then the other is to watch for emerging issues. And that might be something where by being a member of ARCH, we hear of things and we try to inform you of what's going on. So those are areas where they don't call out for a specific effort per se, other than to really keep tabs on them. And they may affect what you try to do the next go-round on what you do. But then finally, what they did, and this is where they really, you know, what I just went through there is meant to be sort of a three, three, three-plus-year range of issues to work on. The last thing they did, and this is the chart on pages 10 and 11, what seems to be the most pressing areas to look? And that's with page 10 and 11. It's a combination of different ones of those priority strategies. And they really sort of fell into themes. The first is, how do we increase the stock and variety of smaller homes? Okay, that was the first theme that they thought needed some, what, concerted effort. The second is improving prospects for transit-oriented development, both general, but also you're doing some initiatives where you may be looking at opportunities for transit improvements or something, where you might be able to incorporate some housing, like in some of the examples I showed you earlier tonight. And that work is going on now. So if you want to try to achieve that, you probably need to marry that conversation up with those conversations or the opportunity will pass. So that was selected because of the potential timeliness of work that's going on with regional transit planning in your community. The third is looking at this existing housing. So that is the housing repair programs, preserving existing affordable housing. We have gone out and groups like the Housing Authority have bought off the open market housing so that it stays relatively affordable. And then the manufactured housing, do you need, are you in a good position there? Are there more that you can do so that 10 years from now or 15 years from now, you're at where you want to be? And then I mentioned the condominium thing, I already mentioned that one. People feel that that's something to pay attention and again, there's a lot of, again, you're going through a lot of construction now, creating that balance in your community. And then you have sub-area plans. And so you do have some sub-area plans that you're working on now and to explicitly make efforts in order to work on, work in those areas and incorporate into those area, plan areas. And then, as I mentioned earlier, you have started some conversation around zoning and increasing capacity and linking affordability to that. And so we think that's an area that, as you saw, a lot of other cities have done that, have the conversation that sets some base elements to that and then start looking at specific areas as appropriate and have that conversation. So those were the most timely areas. And so, and I'm going to sort of see if you have questions on that, but then turn it over to Dave because some of these ideas may be primed for you, this year's work program already. And so that's why I'm going to turn it back over to Dave. But hopefully this has explained to you and we want to open it up to you, ask questions about the different strategies. I don't know if you want to make any comment because of your, you did a lot of work on this, you want to pass on additional thoughts about this effort.
Do you want to speak, Councilmember Zorn?
Get it off my chest.
Yeah.
Well, first off, I have to thank the three gentlemen sitting there at the table there. They brought a lot to the table for planning commission and really helped us clarify things. Never did I feel like you were leading us by the nose when we were making our decisions, but you sure helped us clarify and cull and separate the wheat from the chaff and prioritize. And going back and walking through this material again, I am really impressed how much of the strategies underpin and support each other. So it's very, very cohesive and we could not have done that without what you helped us create. It just wouldn't have been possible. We would have floundered quite a bit. So I just really appreciate all the labor and skill and thought that you brought to this because I think Bothell has got a great plan here.
Anyone else like to comment? Councilmember McCollough?
Thank you. So looking at your top-tier strategies, I guess one of my biggest questions is, in Bothell, do we have affordable condos? I mean, that's one of the strategies, but I'm, from what I know, unless they're older ones, not the, none of the new ones are really affordable.
So, and I think that the, there was a couple of reasons for calling out condominiums. One, the one graphic where they may not be affordable at low income or moderate income, all of them, but they're a lot less expensive than single-family homes. And then the other is it creates, you know, your centers where the condominiums are located, where you're now getting a lot of rental, you're getting a community that has owners and renters and a mixture of types of household, you know, wide range of types of households. So we're not, so that was meant, the interest in condominium is a relative affordability interest, but it's also a community balance of types of housing and opportunities, as much as it is explicit affordability. But yet you do have some condos that are priced at 80%, but you're right, they're probably the older ones, et cetera, so.
So I had a couple of comments. I agree with Councilmember McCollough. I visited a condominium, a townhouse property that opened up this weekend. And they started at 7:50 and they said by the end of Saturday, they were around 900, which doesn't seem affordable to me at all. And so I don't know if there's a way, I assume that any of these incentives or whatever, there might be a way to make those condos affordable or tenements affordable as well?
So there's two parts to your question or two responses. The first is, with the condominium liability, it's to get a wider range of types of condominiums. It's mostly targeted to the flats, which would be a less, a more affordable form of condominium than the townhomes.
Oh, I see.
Townhomes are typically more expensive. And that's the one thing we are still seeing built. But we're saying like in your center, if you go to downtown Bellevue, probably it was 50/50 condos and rental for a long time. And now it's all rental. So it's mostly the flats that we would be talking about that, as I think we're a lot of that interested because that's where your, the centers is the higher density.
So they're more or less apartment buildings, but for ownership.
I call them, right, but they're flats, I call flats.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that are ownership. And several of the slides I showed you in downtown Redmond, some were rental and some were ownership. So that's one. Now, the second part is, like in downtown Redmond, if they build, downtown Redmond requires 10% affordable. So when they build, if they build condos, 10% of them will be targeted at moderate income.
So that's just a requirement, flat-out requirement?
A flat-out requirement in Redmond that was linked to when they increased way back in the 1990s, they increased their heights from three to five stories. And when they did that, they just put that requirement on. And they've now got almost every, many of their neigh, most of their neighborhoods in the city have a flat requirement because over the years they've done actions and stuff. So if condominiums start getting built again in those centers, then you, in a portion, we currently have, through all those cities, there's over 600, I don't know if we've got the 700 yet, Mike? Have we got the 700 yet? Yeah, we may have 600 to 700 ownership units primarily created through land use incentives that have long-term restrictions on pricing through land use incentives. And that's not totally, that's affordable units. So again, that's one of those little here, little there, and it starts to add up over time.
Okay. So I'm particularly interested in transit-oriented development because there's this ongoing conversation about growth and infrastructure not supporting growth. I guess in my mind, that's one of the only ways to, to have growth and not necessarily put too much of an extra burden on infrastructure. So I'm really interested in that. I just don't know, how did the projects that were done above park and rides happen? Because the city obviously doesn't own them, it's either sound transit or metro or community transit. But how would something like that work?
So, I'm trying to remember, is at Village at Overlake, the city took the lead of going to Metro and saying, we want to do it. And Metro hadn't done that yet. And then when Metro finally said, hey, maybe we should do that, there it was, ready to go, the zoning had been done, and they picked that site. Right now, with sound transit, because of the state regulations that went with the adoption of ST3, sound transit is much more proactive in having conversations about how do we, as we're doing our transit improvements, incorporate or accommodate housing and when we can, affordable housing. So they're receptive to conversations. Generally, what happens is transit agency and a city start talking. And a city expresses an interest in wanting to see that happen. Kirkland did that on the South Kirkland Park and Ride. I'd say they initiated the conversation and it happened to coincide with some interest of, that's a metro one as well. But they're doing that right now on another park and ride. They've initiated the public transit, the public landowner of the park and ride. So it's a combination of a little bit of both.
Okay, well, at some point, I guess we're going to just have to have council weigh in so we have a directive to do that. The other thing that I was interested in, I took a tour on Friday with the Housing Consortium of Seattle. So like Martin Luther King, that area. And I can't remember how many sites we visited, but they, one of the things that just kept coming up over and over again was the multifamily tax exemption. So initially, you know, I thought, oh, you know, we're just giving it away. But what, what I was made to understand, and maybe everyone else gets this, but I didn't get it right away, was that the property tax exemption is not as big a deal for the city as it would seem because for every dollar, we're only getting 15 cents or whatever, somewhere around that. But the, the value of having the affordable housing is so much greater. And I think you did a good job of explaining it actually in here. So that's something else that I, like I said, it came up quite a bit in the, in the tour. I guess what I don't understand or I'm not really clear on is where we'd go from here because we just did our docketting and I'm not really clear on, within that docketting, what we have time to actually do on this list of tier one things. Do we, do we like eventually at some point have to pick two? And that's what we get done for this year? I guess I'm not really clear on the process. Because I want to get going, I'm tired of talking about it. I want affordable housing in Bothell.
And we are, and that's a good segue to talk about the slide that's up here now in terms of opportunities for our 2018 work program. In the docket was the, the plan to bring forward, I would hope in the next quarter, the foundational land use code sections that will enable us to, to institute affordable housing requirements when we do capacity increases, either through rezones or through code amendments. So that, that's already in the program. The, we have a few plan and code amendments that were in the docket that some which were prioritized for 2019, some which will be prioritized more specifically after we have that downtown development study session. But there were three-- But there were three potentials in the downtown. One which was specifically in the docket was the rezon from GC to SR5, from general commercial to SR522 corridor in downtown. That would be an opportunity for an affordable, affordability requirement. Two others that we deferred for this affordable housing discussion would be removing the 20 unit per acre limit on the remaining downtown transition districts where those haven't already been removed. That would create a nexus for an affordable housing requirement, as would removing the three-story overlay in the general downtown corridor district, which is mostly along Beardsley. So those are all, those are things that still need some more discussion about whether that's a priority to move forward with this year or potentially next year. In Canyon Park, we certainly have an opportunity there, or we will be exploring our opportunities there to incorporate housing affordability into the plan and code amendments that are, that are planned in Canyon Park. And then we are already evaluating opportunities for some site-specific affordable housing development. We're having conversations with Sound Transit about park and ride structures to serve that SR522, be our bus rapid transit corridor. And we're hoping and working towards solutions that will include housing and potentially affordable housing, or at least have other development associated with those. Also in Canyon Park, we have raised the possibility of a TOD component to the bus base, whether it's in Canyon Park or elsewhere. And then that's certainly a topic that with council support, we could explore in terms of the remaining surplus city properties in downtown. So there are some things that we, that we're ready to kind of dig our teeth into with, with support from the council.
So it sounds like most of them are land use actions and not, not anything like multifamily tax exemption, that sort of thing? That wouldn't be on the docket for this year?
That's not really a planning function, it's more of a, I mean, it's more of a supporting legislative changes that would.
So something like that might be possible.
That was the condo conversion. But MFT is definitely something that we can explore again if, if council is supportive of that.
So to that point.
Oh, go ahead and finish.
I was just going to say, to that point, what, what staff tried to do here is to say, if you want to get the running start, here are some things that have some momentum, you know, that might be a fit already. Part of what we would hope would be done is once, if you agree with the prioritization, you know, with chances here is that last chance to shuffle around some of the prioritization, that then can lead to, what some other cities have done is they look over the next three years and they take those priority things and they figure out where to plug them in. So that there is now a game plan over a couple-year period. So if everything isn't covered right away, at least you start thinking about where do you want those different things to line up, relatively speaking. So that's, and that's, you know, some cities have done that as sort of like a two or three-page document that sort of lays out in the chart. And that's something that would then, if you sort of review that and support it, then that becomes guidance to the staff and to you as you set your future work, overall work dockets.
Okay, great, that's helpful, thank you. Councilmember McCollough?
Yes, and so while I appreciate all of the next steps for the housing strategy, what, what was just said, could you send that to us so I don't have to just like listen and remember? Because May 1, we should be able to start thinking about all that you have just told us. And I'm not sure of all those significant pieces that you just talked about.
So yes, we can certainly include that in the packet for anyone.
That would be great.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Fabulous presentation as always. So I have a question surrounding partnerships. You had mentioned faith-based groups, nonprofits, things like that. Do they engage at the same time as the city would engage with the transit agencies? Or how does that, how do you see that typically work? Does, is there a lead person, lead person in the project and then the transit, like the city would take the lead, then the transit comes in, then a nonprofit developer comes in after that? How does that all?
I think it can vary. The past experience with faith communities is somehow a faith community asks a question and they sometimes get sent, if someone says, oh, you should talk to. And we'll sit down with that faith community and talk with them and try to get them to think through, just kind of like we did with the commission, well, what do you really want to achieve? What, what is the parameters? What's important to you? We try to help them think through this big idea to a more specific idea. And then at that point, we generally say, okay, you know, like if it means partnering, gee, some of the things you're talking about as a partner, here are some players, go talk to them and create that partnership. In other words, you need somebody to get, to go beyond. So generally with faith properties, very early on, you sort of help the churches get to a point where they kind of know what they want so that they can then talk to other people and start creating that partnership. And those are usually done from the get-go because the faith community usually doesn't have the development background. And so partnering there helps the whole thing come together. With the, with the transit facilities, there it's generally been more city with the transit agency and they start evolving it. And that's where we sort of try to get the city to sort of start weighing in on, well, if we're going to do housing here, this is what we'd like to see. And see if between the transit agency or the landowner there and the city, you kind of come up with a framework. And then usually there, there's a more formal RFP process where you put all of that into a, you know, into a proposal that people respond to. So there usually you shape it a little bit more at the community level and then you find a partner that would implement that for you. So it's a little bit different in different circumstances.
And they potentially could, could be doing different types of things. So I think you had a, I think you did have a, a project that had multiple layers, they had some homelessness and some affordable housing.
Right. So the one in Woodinville, the city worked on that for two years to sort of say, you know, here is a town newly incorporated, 150 affordable units are, 120 out of 240 units are affordable at 30 and 50% of median for 100 rental, I mean, just something completely foreign to them. We got them there by doing some master planning with them. Arch actually has a little bit of reserve funds that we use to help, we call it get sites ready, to allow people to think through. We thought through the wetland issues. We actually had the wetland mitigation approved before we went out on the RFP. So the builders knew they didn't have to take a year to get that taken care of. We got the city to visualize what they would get excited about. So they had a master plan actually done so that the community vision was very clear. Then they did the RFP and that way the development committee had a very clear vision of what we get the city and the landowner most excited. So it really can vary depending on the circumstance. But most importantly, when it's publicly controlled, we usually see at a council level, some level of involvement so that what finally starts to mature, you're excited about. It makes sense. Faith properties, it's usually more, a little more, the groups, the community groups will try to figure out a vision that will fit on their property and will provide enough input to them so that it, you know, something that we'll want to fund in the end, that kind of thing.
So in looking at the strategic overall plan, we really need to come up, I would think we'd want to come up with how much affordable housing, how much homeless housing, the different elements that we would want to have, where we want to have them within our community, within our city. I understand the tiers, tier one, and I've read through that stuff and I understand the different tiers, I understand the priorities of starting the plan and where you work, but is it also important for us to know where we are, what levels we're at today? Meaning, you'd mentioned two-thirds, our city has two-thirds of the manufactured homes in the region? Is that correct?
In East King County, correct.
Okay, so is, do we need, so I don't, as a council member, I don't know if we specifically need to have more manufactured homes. But I do know that we need to, we, you just showed a slide that showed how many homeless students we have and how many homeless, 120 or something like that, within the area, whatever it was. But there's a need for that. So understanding what our needs are and then also understanding what our needs are going to be in the future. Because you, you talk about the Growth Management Act and I think they say by 2050, another million eight are coming. But how many are coming to our area, to, within our city? We want to be part of the solution for the region, but I would like to understand what that dynamic's going to look like for us, you know, within our community. So we, you know, obviously we don't want to overbuild something, but we also don't want to underbuild it. We want to make sure that it's balanced. So it's understanding that dynamic, how that works. For me, as a, as a council member, I would like to know that. I'd like to understand that a little bit more. I don't know if going through this process is going to give me that information because the materials that I've read are fabulous. I mean, they tell us how to plan for things, but they don't, I can't ascertain from them what we actually have.
So that, if you look at the full needs analysis, you get more of that, that's a much thicker document that was done as part of the comprehensive plan. Now welcome to the messiness of housing. You don't build the housing, you set the context for housing to be built. Now, just to clarify on one of your points, with manufactured housing, we weren't talking about expanding, we were talking about not losing. So that's the issue there, is we are seeing in other parts of the region, loss. Now you have zoning, so that's very different than most cities. So you may, and so that's where it's kind of like, are you okay? Is that there and it's working? But it's an important enough resource that they didn't want to lose it, so it may be worth some extra research to make sure you don't lose that opportunity somehow and, and stuff. And it may be, do you do things to help individual owners be able to keep their units in good condition or something? In terms of your, how many of different types, if you remember the trust fund distribution, we say we have families and seniors and homeless and special needs. There are percentage goals we have for each of those four areas. And those are based on looking very at data, a long time ago, but we keep looking at the data and we see the world isn't shifting that much, that that relative balance, that what we do with the trust fund is we do try to steer this big ship. We don't worry about year-to-year hitting those percentages, we worry about if we start going off by four or 5% up or down, how can we try to steer the funding to get that balance? So I think the point I'm trying to make, and then in terms of how much lower-income housing, the numbers are so overwhelming that that's hard to sort of say, I'm going to do this number and I'm going to make it happen. It's more of, with the tools at my disposal, how good a job can I get to try to get there? I don't know if we'll get there. And so that's where the dynamic of like with surplus land, you can sort of say like, in Redmond, they did one property homeless, they did one property family, and they did one property senior. Part of that was dictated that one piece of land, to get that land for free from the federal government, they had to do homeless. So that helped make up their mind. Another piece, it was next to the library, bus, shopping, senior center, city hall, and they went senior. We haven't done senior before, we'd like to do senior here. There aren't wrong answers, there might be better answers. And so part of this dynamic of process is trying to be more proactive in certain areas. And that's what the commission tried to identify, whether or not you need to say it's in this part of the city or not, that especially in the affordable housing areas, the interest is being near transit as much as we can. You know, that's the general rule that we try to meet when we can. But to try to fine-tune it much beyond that, given the resources at your disposal, is you can spend a lot of energy, but you never get to the, you know, when that land comes up, that's where that piece of land is. Most of that land is being competed with by the private market. So it's often a matter of, here's an opportunity, what's the best fit given the opportunity we have? Not always, you know, and sometimes you try to be more proactive, other times you're reactive because land is hard to get control of.
Yeah, and I, and thank you for that, Arthur. I, I still go back to understanding the dynamics of our sub-areas and how our sub-areas work, what we want to put in different sub-areas. And if we just, to me, I just have this fear, if we just blanket, put the policy in effect and it's across the city, we could be doing ourselves a disservice too. So I just, to me, I just want to make sure that we're balancing it. And I, and maybe through this process, it does help you balance it.
And that's, I, that, thank you. The sub-areas allow you to sort of be that, okay, now in this area, let's look at these needs and are there certain things that are best fits here? Just like when you have a piece of surplus land, let's look at all those different needs, what's the best fit? So that's one reason we did, if you notice, it's listed twice, because that's where you have the ability to look at smaller areas of the city and be more refined. And we, and I think we feel like that's the best place to have those conversations because you have people who are really focused on that neighborhood, talking about that neighborhood. But there's some guidance from the stuff that's come from the plan to say, we want you to look at these four or five things and see which of these could fit in your area.
Okay, right, thank you.
Councilmember Ragnar?
Well, thank you for the presentation. I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Dorr that it's time that we start doing some things to have affordable housing in the city. Now, you were saying that we have a disproportionate amount of manufactured homes in Bothell. Do we know, in the manufactured homes themselves, how many are seniors?
I don't think we have that.
Okay, I would think that would be a relatively high percentage.
Right, because there are a number of communities that are explicitly for seniors.
Right, right. So I, so I think we're probably doing fairly well with seniors. I'm more interested in the homeless, the low income, the moderate income that we need to address in some way, shape, or form. I love the idea of the transit-oriented developments. I like the idea of us probably putting out incentives to try to increase the number of affordable homes that we can get into the city. I definitely want to do something, like I said, for the homeless and for the homeless I'm looking forward to you guys guiding us a little bit through this next process because you are going to have to guide us a little bit. But I think all of us up here on the dais want to do something to bring more people back in, to have the people that work in the city be able to live in the city. Whether we have to try to go out and try to figure out what millennials want and to bring them in, so be it. You know, I've told the story a number of times, my son wanted to live in Bothell, the city that he grew up in, and couldn't afford it. You know, and, and that to me is a travesty, it really is. So help guide us.
So as you went, I went back to this slide because I think, I'm hoping that what's up there is pretty close to what you were just saying. And that's one of the things we want to see from you, if you feel like the areas that were identified feel like the important areas. And then the other comment I would make to your, to the latter part is, remember that one with all the dots in the first presentation? Last week, we gave that to our executive board of Arch and somebody asked, well, which ones of these did you work on? So we did a different version and it was solid dots and clear dots. And the solid dots are all the ones in which we did provide assistance as staff, just like we did to the commission on this rezon stuff and, and stuff. And of the 100 dots, there were about 95 that were solid. That's what we're here for. Where you, we see ourselves, what things you, you decide what you want to work on, our job is to help you as you work on the things you want to work on.
And we appreciate that.
Okay, well, it was, I don't, are you, I don't know if you're finished, but to this point, it's overwhelming how much work was done. It's really mind-blowing and for you to be able to present it in a, in a way that we could follow and understand is, is pretty commendable. So thank you for, for running us through that, a huge amount of information.
So I think we just wanted to probably just confirm where we go from here. I think we have, coming in May, the, the hearing and your ability to take final action. But one thing we want to do, and we sort of heard some of it tonight, is does the filtration that is represented at this point in the strategy plan feel like the right filtration that's been done, tier one and the timeliness? Or if there's any there that you'd like to play around with? So that's one. And then the second is that you asked for, is we would, you know, staff would work on trying to start putting that three-year kind of schedule together and where, for whatever reasons, because we know there's other things already going on next year or the following year, or because they feel like they're important, try to figure out what years different strategies would be addressed from that, from that top list. And those, I think we thought were the next steps and do they sound like the right next steps for you?
Shall we each go through and, and answer that question? Does that work? Okay, so Councilmember McNeil, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I just, and before we answer the question, I just had a question. Yeah, I just, and before we answer the question, I just had a question. So should we be prioritizing this based on what we know are our emergent needs? And I guess that'd be a question for Dave.
I guess what I would suggest is, planning commission has done their, they're taking their shot at the priorities. What we're looking for you is, have they, have they gotten that right? And if there are areas that you'd like to tweak, that's what we'd like to know for the May 1st meeting so that we can make those adjustments.
Okay. So without going back through the entire document, I guess...
Yeah, we don't want to start over.
Right. I guess for me, for me, understanding the need around affordable housing in this initiative would be our transit-oriented developments and our Canyon Park growth center. Those are the two areas that stand out the most for me.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
So I think that getting a three-year plan in place is critically important at this point. But I want to know what communication, our outreach you're doing for the faith communities because I think what we want to know from them is, what do they want? And how do they want to partner with us in order to get that? So we have a lot of faith communities and temples and different cultures in this city. And so I want to know how you're gonna outreach to them.
Okay. Are you asking right now or when we come? I mean, I think what would happen is, when we look at those priority strategies and the ones we filter up, we do have, you know, we say surplus, but if you look at the slide, the surplus slash underutilized, what I'm hearing from you is include underutilized and we need to be proactive, right? So in that work program, we would include, you know, some statement to make it clear that part of that is reaching out. And then you'll need to decide, is that one, year one, two, or three, kind of thing. So we'll put it in somewhere and you can decide if we have it in the right place.
But I think my question is, are you going to outreach to them to find out what they, what they need?
Well, they, we, need in terms of...
What they would hope to, what kind of housing do their families need?
So we did do a focus group of faith community members about the community and housing needs in the community in general.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm looking for.
So when you're looking at Penix, they gave us some input into the process. What I was sort of reading between the lines on is, how do we keep working with them? Because if they have an interest, there are other cities they have, how do we nurture that interest? And that, to me, would be more of a work program item.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, Councilmember Ragnow?
Well, I agree with a couple of my colleagues that have already talked, you know, in looking at what's a tier one and tier two, I think they've, they've hit it pretty close to the head. I'm looking forward to more of the information that you bring back to us at our next meeting.
Councilmembers Orange?
This is the time to give an opinion, right? So it's hard to tamper with perfection on the, on our strategies. Of my personal druthers, you know, what I'm going to be looking for are things like transit-oriented development. What dynamics are we, are we planning for in our Canyon Park? And I think we've already got a head start on encouraging ADUs and allowing people to find creative ways, if they're sitting on a larger lot, that can be made smaller with a cottage house and our cluster housing. I think we've got a great groundwork happening. You know, you're talking about faith-based and creating small clustered housing is a, could be a great spot to couple up with certain faith groups. I am gonna, I will personally be resistant to placing density increases where we already have quite a bit of density, but I would love to look at MFTEs as a way to encourage affordable housing. But I think those, I think those are my biases of what we'll, I'll be looking for in 2018.
So I guess that leaves me, so I agree with the housing gaps. It seems to me that the correct filters and priorities were put on the tier one. I agree about transit-oriented development. I think that's probably highest on my list. I agree with the MFTEs, particularly if it's not going to be held up because of community development hours, if we can do that. I want to go as far and as fast as we can early on. I want to hit the low-hanging fruit and I want to go for the fruit that's at the top of the tree. In watching or in looking at this presentation, I just felt like we're really coming from behind and we need to make some progress. I think it's time. I look at what Bothell's implemented in those dots, and I personally find it somewhat embarrassing. So I want us to make a change. And anything we can do to make that happen, I will advocate and push and do whatever. But I really appreciate all the work that's been done. It's pretty amazing how you filtered it all down for us because it's overwhelming in terms of the amount of information. Is that, is that what you need? Is there anything else?
Yes, there's one more thing. So you may say you need to do more, but sometimes you have to pat yourself on the back for what you do do. And last Tuesday, a week ago, Housing Development Consortium has their big annual luncheon, and it was their 30-year anniversary. And they gave out three awards, some mostly to individuals, but they gave an award to the Arch cities. And you're part of the reason why, because they saw that last trust fund round, and they saw how many councils stepped up more to the plate than they have in the past. And they also saw how a number of the cities initiated projects, right? Kirkland with the shelter and City of Issaquah with the park, the Trailhead project. And not only did they contribute funding through that direct means, but they also found that extra money to further supplement. And so we have your copy of the municipal, 2018 municipal champion award that was given to all the Arch cities who participated in the trust fund process last year. So make sure you applaud yourself from time to time for the things you are doing.
It's as much your award as ours, Arthur. Thank you. So with that, are we finished with our meeting? Oh, Councilmember McAuliffe?
I don't want to interrupt, but there is someone in the audience that I would like to, a special guest. Kelly Snyder is here tonight because she was part of the nominations for international women who do service to our community. And I just wanted to recognize Kelly, if we could. Kelly? And I know we'll have certificates to honor you as well, and thank you for your contribution to the community, and appreciate your being here. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, thank you so much. I got the notification today, and I'm sorry, I can't be here next week when you honor the other women of leadership. So it's been my honor to be a part of this community. I've lived here for 24 years. Ben was on the Bothell Parks and Rec Commission for six years and have worked at the University of Washington for almost 10 now. And as we just finished up our campus master planning process, and I think about the amazing work that we're gonna start doing on our campus and being part of this community, it's, it's exciting to be part of it. It's never dull. And I just thank you so much for your support of our campus and, and for me and my profession and personally. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by... Anyone? All seconded. All in favor. Shall we just do a, okay, voice vote. All in favor. Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Have a great night.